So we are back in open session. And we are going to begin tonight's meeting with the superintendent's report.
We have to call the board of education. We are going to call the time to talk for the committee and the question. Like, we should open by this evening and then do the public hearing.
Oh, you do have the budget hearing.
Yeah.
Okay. You're not doing the roll again, right?
Yeah, we do. We will call for it, right? Yeah. Do the motion to open?
Open, I'm making motion to open the public hearing.
Oh, the public hearing.
Yeah. And then we'll have a hearing for the budget amendment. So we'll just kind of go through that. Yeah.
All right. Okay. So we're back in open session now. Um, Kathy, is there any public comment? Okay. So, the Board, is there a motion to, for the Board of Education to open the budget hearing for approving the fiscal year 23 budget amendment? Kathy, can you call the votes?
This claps?
All right. Is there, is like the other speakers?
No.
It's just that? I don't think it's loud enough.
This guy?
We're okay, we're okay. Because it would get louder when it's time to bring the kids.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Mayor?
Hi.
The hearing is open.
Okay. Is there any public comment on the fiscal year 23 budget? Budget? You'd assume no? Okay. Is there a motion for the Board of Education to declare the budget hearing for approving the fiscal year 23 budget amendment to be closed? Did you get that, Kathy? Okay.
Mr. Marlowe? Mr. Hodge?
All right.
This guy?
Adam.
Kayla?
Hi.
Hi.
The hearing is closed.
Okay. We're going to move on to the superintendent's report.
All right. I think that's loud. Is that better? All right, we are thrilled to see so many people in this auditorium. It is great. Um, it has been a long time since we've been able to invite so many students to join us here in public. So, um, tonight is our Student Achievement and Recognition Awards, and I know that's why many, many people are here tonight. So I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Angela Dozel in this April May to start introducing names and share certificates. I just want to say, just a huge warm welcome to everybody. It's great to see so many people here.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for coming out tonight. We really appreciate it. I am Dr. Angela Dozel. I'm the Director of Teaching and Learning. Uh, and it's great to be able to take this time to recognize the efforts and the work of our students through the second half of the school year. We do this during the first half of the school year as well, but most of those awards are for junior high students because they get some periodically throughout the year. So, this is a little bit bigger because we include our elementary young author students, and so we will go ahead and start with our Young Authors Participation Awards.
And if I could, two or three of you?
Yes.
Can I make a claim?
Yeah. Do that. Sure, yeah, me too. Okay.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. We have so many students to recognize. We're going to try to do this in an orderly fashion, one that makes sense, but one that also gives recognition to all the students for their great work. We are going to start with the Young Authors Award. What I would please like everyone to do is hold your applause to the end. I have five and a half pages of names to read, all of which are elementary students. I'm going to apologize now if I mess up your name. I'm so sorry, but I'm going to do the best that I can. What the students will do is when you hear your name called, you're going to walk on down, whether you're upstairs in the balcony or down here, you're going to come down this aisle, say your name to Dr. Dozel, because by the time I've said your name and you get down here, it could be a different timing. Say your name to Dr. Dozel. You're going to come up the stairs behind Dr. Dozel, and then you get to shake the hands of our wonderful Board members. And then you're going to go down the stairs on that side. Parents, I know a lot of you have a lot of other activities that you're trying to get to. It is not rude at all. It is okay that when your child gets off the stage, if you need to walk right on out the door, that is okay. When we're done with the Young Authors, then we will applaud for them, and then we'll move on to the next group. The other groups are not that big. Okay? All right. Let's get started with these Young Authors Awards. Maya Abud, Eva Alkaila, Patrick Almazan, Aubrey Almazan, Morgan Amador, Thomas Ames, Kari Amin, Sakina Amin, Natalie Anderson, Mateo Arroyo, Noah Asaf, Bruce Avina, David Baptist, James Barrera, Isaac Barrera, Robin Bars, Marco Batista, Margaret Bayer, Yando Binder, Eliza Binder, Emmett Bischoff, Will Black, Clara Bobek, Roman Banzai, Tyler Bowes, Maya Bogatz, Emma Bogatz, Gabe Bolchert, Ellie Bolts, Annalise Brazanas, Alden, no, I'm sorry, Aiden Booton, Maeve Bradshaw, Madeline Brower, Teddy Brusawitz. Bruce? Bruce, was that you? Come on up. You hear your name, run on up. We got it.
Marlowe.
Good job.
Margaret. Anna? Binder? Aiden? Emma? Will?
Good job, guys.
Roman? Tyler?
Okay, and we are going to resume. I believe I left off with Teddy Brusawitz, but I want to make sure we say his name. Larkin Bucheri, Nanami Burdine, Oliver Burdine, Rowan Burns, Jack Butcher, Emmy Butcher, Mila Caputo, Emilia Cardoza, Abby Carlston, Simone Carmona, Shelby Carnahan, Chris Carr Straney, Isabel Casey, Sophia Castaneda, Camilla Cervantes, Josephine Cheatham, Penelope Cheatham, Mick Schlada, Nora Cipriani, Cade Clement DeMiglio, Adely Cochran, Liam Darrow Coover, Savannah Cotham, Margot Christ, Michaela Cruz, Maeve Dan, Ivy Davis, Isaiah Del Angel, Nolly Del Angel, Tamzin Delajuski, Camden Dickerson, Emmett Dickerson, Milana Di Natal, Elizabeth Di Natal, Isabel Dobins, Joseph Donlin, Elizabeth Donlin, Brenna Dorlett, Asher Drake, Willow Drake, Marie Dudzik, Ian Durbin, Eric Durbin, Joey DeVorek, Adeline DeVorek, Willow Eddy, Abe Eklund, Iris Eklund, Jacob Elizondo, Mason Elkins, Alexandra Andurle, Jason Espinoza, Mallory Faught, Holly Faught. All right, continuing on. Violet Filipkowski, Kayla Filipkowski, Miguel Flores, Nikali Flores, Maeve Flynn, Andrew Foster, Beatrice Franco, Olivia Galindo, Alyssa Garcia, Zoe Garfield, Kenzie Garza, Jackson Garza, Avara Giyamasi Schema, Joaquin Jerran, Eris Graham, Lily Graves, Noel Gray, Noah Gray, Frankie Giardi, Raul Guzman, Haley Halman, Walter Henigan, Olin Heredia, Anisa Hernandez, Victoria Hernandez, Joseph Hinson, June Hoffman, Evelyn Hoker, Leila Hoppick Castaneda, Elise Herta, Aiden Hughes, Leah Hull. Really good manners with your kids here. I hear lots of thank yous as they're waiting patiently. Okay, continuing on. Harrison Hunt, Catherine Hunt, Sienna Incandella, Pearson Ingram, Emma Rose Ingram, Vera Ivy, Lulu Jansen, Fay Gisa, Louis Gisa, Gloria Gisa, Finnegan Johnson, Emiliana Johnson, Olivia Johnson, Aiden Kazmarcek, Zachary Kazmarcek, Leo Casparek, Elena Casparek, Adeline Katz, Clara Knowles, Ashley Cosman, Colton Creutz, Adelaide Ada Kukendal, Archer Latham, Ava Lauer, Ella Lovoe, Luke Lawton, Guy Leisure, Lottie Leester, Jackson Lesniak, Sophie Lesniak, Adeline Lesniak, Alina Lesniak, Vincent Lil, Fred Lil, Penelope Lenaris, Marcelo Lenaris, Emilio Lopez, Kena Lubek, Emily Lumen, Neve Lumel, Marian Matzek, Claire Marx, Peyton Mattinson, Anthony Matteo, Isabel Malbin, Evelyn May, Amelia May, Daniel May, Mabel McLean, Leo McCreery, Rowan McKinstry, Finley McKinstry. And students, when you get to Dr. Dozel, say your last name loud and proud, okay? Tell her your last name loud and proud. That will be a good start. The last name was McKinstry. We're on the Ms. I'm turning, I turned this off. That would be back here. Now, there's no Kalniss. No. Okay. William Kalniss?
Kalniss.
Kalniss. William Kalniss. Can I just say it? Okay. Okay. Continuing on. William Kalniss. Will Meeger. Scarlett Meeger. Blaze Morell. Elani Mesa. Evelyn Mitchell. Winnie Moore. Cora Morganeg. Alexander Munoz. Samuel Munoz. Jay Ashree Merholsamy. Jack Neal. Victoria Newsom. Fiona O'Reardon. Elena Ortiz. Elizabeth Ortiz. Lionel Otero. Emma Padilla. Mary Parker. Robert Parker. Elsie Pollack. Lucia Pizano. Charlotte Piotnik. Nora Pollack. Ava Powers. Olive Prosser. Stella Prosser. Eve Pusko. Eddie Pusko. Emalia Remteria. Dylan Robb. Anna Rosenberg. Erin Rockman. Continuing on. Nora Rumler. Cole Ryan. Yael Sanchez. Arya Sanchez. We do have a full-service Board of Education. They are willing to tie shoes or whatever is needed. All right. Continuing on. Haley Scariano. Ella Schexnader. Emmett Schliemann. Arianna Shu. Meredith Schweitzer. Skylar Serio. Tori Sherman. Blake Severt. Benjamin Smolerek. Andrew Soriano. April Soriano. Maya Soto. Lilly Stazik. Asila Stroh. Alina Stroh. Violet Sweeney. Audrey Swaderski. Olivia Talicon. Cyan Toland. Maeve Toland. Seth Trezic. Penelope Tomas. Gus Tomas. I'm on the last page. Of the Young Authors. I know it feels long to us, but the smile that I can see on these kids' faces as they walk across the stage is quite worth the time, for sure. They're, they're quite proud, as they should be, walking across. And in our midst may be a future author that we all pay to buy their books. All right. We are going to continue on. We are on the U's. Hazel Umbrich. Gretchen Umbrich. Manuel Valero. Or Valario, sorry, Manuel. Hunter Ferdugo. Ida Vick. Vivian Wagner. Samuel Waters. Annalise Waters. Mara Weber. Roy Wegman. Luca Wareman. Emerson Wyland. Kirin Worth. Maya Worth. Dylan Worth. William Wolfgang Kalniss. Oliver Wong. Sophia Weiskel. Anika Yance. Mae Zaluski. Henry Zaluski. Henry Zaluski. While they're finishing the Young Authors, our balcony people, there's now room down here. If you'd like to move down, you'd have time to do that. All right. And as our last students for the Young Authors cross the stage, let's give them all a great big hand. Okay, we're gonna keep on rolling, cuz there's more to go. For the 27th Annual AAUW Poster Contest Winners, we have the following winners. And it looks to be like these are all 4th graders from across the district. We have Adeline Dvorak. Luca Gonzalez. Lily Graves. Samantha Gustella. Frankie Hartford. Sienna Incandella. Tori Sherman. Ruby Walsh. And Logan Wells. Let's give our artists a big hand. As you can see, this district is filled with talent. Our future is bright. Moving on to a little different area for athletics this year, the 7th Grade Girls Basketball Team won the Salt Creek Valley Conference Champions. I will call those students up to come across the stage. Addison Butler. Madeline Dan. Claire Evans. Nula Lubek. Greta Lupfer. Lucy McAllister. Gwyneth McNally. Sloan McNally. Mia Wychmanowski. And Reese Zaluski. Congratulations, basketball girls! We're gonna move into the Book Bowl Winning Team. And this is a junior high book bowl where kids are reading books and then competing with trivia from the books. The winning team this year came from 6th Grade. Their names were the Wreck-It Readers. And they are Charlie Hull, Gavin Pelton, and Josh Thompson! Then Hauser also wanted to recognize some creative writers. We had a creative writing contest. First place creative writing co-author was, for the story "Pit of Lies," was 7th Grader Sophie Dickerson and 7th Grader Amanda Kruger. Second place creative contest winner, "The Shifting of the Sky," written by Lua Kinoshida. And our third place winner, wrote "Mother Always Said" by Sophia May. And we have History B winners from Hauser. We have first place 7th Grader Cameron Glennie. Second place 6th Grader Dominic Cowell. And third place 8th Grader Sophie May. There she is. All right. For the Noetic Competition and National Honor Roll, this is a math competition. And this is a long page, so we'll hold our applause to the end. But we have Beckett Blomgren. Chris Canstrani. Adely Cochran. Evan Colmon. Eric Durbin. Madison Fish. Jonathan Fulmer. Fulmler. Xantha George. Olivia Laval. Evelyn May. Gabriel Morgan. Jay Ashri Muthasami. Noetic. Reagan Romero. Ella Schmeling. John Schreier. Ryan Uribe. Harper Willhite. Dylan Worth. Henry Zaluski. Abe Eklund. Jackson Garva. Garza. Luca Gonzalez. Emmett Hack. Shane Hafner. Walter Hannigan. Sienna Incandella. Luca Jansen. Elise Kleiber. Daniel May. Mara McGary. Stella Prosser. Jack Siegel. Zachary Kesmarcek. Henry Lipitz. Natalie Anderson. Anell Sermosenko. Ayla Gordon. Ruby Walsh. Frankie Hartford. Peyton Mattinson. Cowan Morrell. April Soriano. Andrew Zhang. Ty Chase. And Peyton Mattinson. Yay! We're going. Peer Mentors. We had 10 7th Graders chosen through an interview process to start a program next year of Peer Mentors. And those 10 students are Violet Brooks. Sophia Galindo. Grace Gustella. CJ Hardisty. Olivia Laneres. Nula Lubek. Leo Martinez. Sophia Rotis. Cora Rosenfeld. And Mia Wychmanowski. We're looking forward to some great things from them. We have two Special Olympians to recognize. First, we have 8th Grader Isaiah Gayton for his gold medal winner of the 100-meter run for the Special Olympics Spring Games Track Meet. And we have Louis Jarrah, gold medal winner in the softball throw for the Special Olympics Spring Games Track Meet. And then we have Speech and Drama Team Ribbon Winners. Brooke Bennetts. Josie Chase. Asher Cochran. Anne Maggie. Donnell Owens. Kira Ruddy. Joshua Thompson. Camden Truesdale. Ethan Willey. Ivana Zapir. Dylan Bolt. Alina Chirona. Sorry, Charnia. Julius Graham. Mia Rurka. Gia Tomaszewski. Henry Bacchus. Ella Blomgren. Chloe Cochran. Isabella Detmer. Henry Hall. Sophie May. Maddie Mizlinski. Stella Pickman. Sophia Rotis. And Luke Ryzuski, all of our Speech and Drama Winners. And then finally, we have our Students of the Month for January, February, March, and April here at Hauser. So for the month of January, 6th Grader Roman Lopez. 6th Grader Donnell Owens. 6th Grader Trey Weiskel. 7th Grader Dylan Bolt. 7th Grader Camila Ramirez. 7th Grader David Santilli. 8th Grader Hamza Ahmad. 8th Grader Gabriela Patak. 8th Grader Will Rio. For February, we had 6th Grader Georgie Kirsch. 6th Grader Jaden Patchett. 6th Grader Bryce Sherman. 7th Grader Sophia Rotis. 7th Grader Clement Shajon. 7th Grader Mia Wychmanowski. 8th Grader Clara Cheatham. 8th Grader Will Gibson. 8th Grader Olivia Thomas. In March, we had 6th Grader Mahir Amin. 6th Grader Elizabeth Arlowski. 6th Grader Sophia Dobey. 7th Grader Ethan Bryant. 7th Grader Eliana Gomez. 7th Grader Kaylee Saccido. And 8th Grade Mira Douglas. 8th Grade Adryza Resha. And 8th Grade Molly Wonderlick. And our final month of Student of the Months for this school year, for April, 6th Grader Camila Cabral. 6th Grader Lewis Lockwood. 6th Grader Tessa Sherman. 7th Grader Dimitrov Hoster. 7th Grader Wilson Leester. 7th Grader Andrew Malvin. 8th Grader Enzo Burke. 8th Grader Ghost Mendoza. And 8th Grader Sophie Simpson, all of our Students of the Month. As our final students are getting their certificates and getting to walk across the stage and be congratulated by our Board of Ed, we just wanted to say thank you again to all of the families for all of your support. School is school, and we have a great academic program, but it's all of these other wonderful enhancements, activities, programs that we have that really makes school fun, enjoyable, that they wanna come to school, and makes learning fun. And that wouldn't be without all of your support and help at home. So all of the kids here still, let's give your parents a round of applause for supporting you!
Yeah, see, it's... Just have the music like, uh... This is off now. I would just have the music like, uh... This is for, yeah, this is for TV. This is, they're gonna amplify it. This is so that Selena's gonna be able to hear, because she's in the background. So I'm gonna, this'll be, this'll be live. Yeah.
Everybody out.
But keep it about, keep it about like, you know, yeah. Like, uh...
Oh, she's down the corner.
And where did, she's gonna hear us directly into the, it's fed directly into, okay. Gotcha, alright.
And that's not the end of the superintendent's report, so that's probably our report ever.
It might be.
Very exciting.
It's our biggest crowd in the city. I did wanna pass along that this month is Appreciation Month for several very important employee groups. Our Teacher Appreciation Month, Teacher Appreciation Week was last week. Certainly want to share that I know we just greatly appreciate our teachers. There's also Nurse Appreciation Month and Crossing Guard Appreciation Month, so I wanted to share all of that. And then next, and with that, we are going to move on to our Quest Foods Services presentation. Total shift of gears here, so... So Jim, I know I just saw Jim. We wanted to put Quest under our superintendent's report in an effort to move them early enough in the meeting, if there are some outside guests and presenters, so thanks for being here.
You're welcome.
I'll turn it all over to Jim and the team.
Okay, next slide. So a few months ago, we found out that our cafeteria manager would be, will be retiring. And so we were faced with the challenge of replacing her, which kinda made it a good time to review everything else about our food service program. So the challenge is that we came up with that, first time we talked about it, is to replace the cafeteria manager and do a total review of the current program. Specifically, recommend improvements to line flow. And then assess the possibilities of improving the meals at the other schools, so the ones that don't have NSLP program. And there's the two options we showed there, trying to match all the elementaries to each other, and ideally someday, everybody, all the schools matching Hauser. If we go to the next slide. We have a couple representatives from Quest Foods to tell you what they discovered. I have Jamie Arnt and Malik Stewart, who are gonna tell you what they learned while they were watching our operations.
Okay. If I wanna go over there, I can see it better? Okay, I can do this, okay. All right, next slide. And next slide. Okay, so what we did was go through all the schools, kinda wanted to see where everything stood right at the beginning. So we took a look at first the enrollment for each one of the buildings, what the average daily attendance was, the grade levels. Free and reduced, which reaches from 42% to 22%. We have NSLP, you guys have NSLP appropriate at two of your schools right now, and the plan was to look forward to Fall '23 and move it over to NSLP as well. We've talked about, there's two new status of service in NSLP. One is offer and one is serve. Jim and I talked about starting on as offer versus serve, so I don't know what the final decision will be, but that's what we talked about. And then we also kinda noted the average lunches and noted that free and reduced are only served at the three buildings, Ames, Light, and Hollywood. Next slide. So also, just going back to the existing status, right now, we have push coin. It's a cashless system right now. It's a cashless system right now. There's POS systems only at Hauser and Central. Current student lunch price is $3.70, the faculty price is $4.50, which is required to be at least 50 cents higher than the student lunch for NSLP. Your last administrative review or audit was February 10th through 13th, 2020. They happen every five years, and they provide technical assistance in any areas that are required. Service restrictions that we noted were that the district doesn't want to use straws, and they want to use recyclable or marshable trays. Next slide. At Hauser Junior High, currently, there's one line. And when I timed the line, it was taking about 10 to 15 minutes for them to be served. A couple things that we talked about was establishing a sandwich selling station, maybe away from the main line so that we could direct some of the students in another location. The other thing that we talked about was setting up an additional point of sale, just to help improve the line flow a little bit. So we did kind of work through that a couple of times, which I really think is a good option and wouldn't be costly at all to be able to implement that. Because they do have, they do have another POS system already on site. The other thing that we recommended also was to move all the condiments, plasticware, and napkins out of the serving line to the cafeteria. Because what happens right now, if you can see in that picture, right where the end of the line is, that's where all the condiments are. So as the students finally get their food, get to the line, then they're making decisions about what they need to pick up and take, like ketchup, mustard, whatever. So if we set up a couple of condiment stations away from the line after they got their food, that would speed the line up a little bit too. And those are just really simple things to improve the line. The other thing that we suggested was to create and implement the use of student IDs to be able to let them use scanners. Right now, the students are punching in their numbers, and that takes quite a bit longer than we could just scan them through. So that would be, that would definitely speed up the line. And then one thing that we would also do is create menus and production sheets using our software, the new software. At Central Elementary, all of the items right now are self-serve items with all the hot items being bagged. So the line really does seem to move faster than at Hauser. Making a bell station and separating the condiments would also improve the efficiency at that location as well. And creating the IDs and being able to utilize the scanners instead of having the students punch in their numbers. Next slide. So now I'm going to turn over to my colleague, Malik, and he is going to talk about what some of the plans are for the other buildings.
Alright, so we want to go over Ames, Light, and Hollywood. So these are the schools that will be converting over to NSLP. So currently, right now, our plan is to make sure that we go satellite prepare foods already to serve. So by satellite, that means that all of the food be prepared in one cafeteria and moved over to the next. So we are, we're already in the works of establishing a process for receipt meal counts. So we want to create and implement student IDs to be scanned, which should be through our POS systems. And we'll consider pocket charts, parking charts for the ID cards to be secured. So we want to hire four food service employees. One food service employee for each of the three schools, and one of the new hires will have a newer position. So we do want one of the drivers to be a server as well. We're going to start them out around 18, 20. And the district midday employees will be cashiers during lunch. So with NSLP, it's always important that we have a beginning and end of service. So the point of sale is really important with making sure we're counting each meal. So this is why we definitely want to go with that. Next slide. Alright, so commodities. So this is money that we get from the USDA. So this is dollars that, you see this school year, we got $20,471. Next school year, actually doubled, so this is great. So one thing about commodity dollars is if you use it all by a certain date, usually the USDA will give you more. So this is definitely going to help with reducing food costs. So for next school year, let's say that $44,000, we're about in March and April. If we're pretty much out of it, that'd be great. So the next school year, it's not always double, but it will increase. So that's something we're, want to make sure that we're decreasing our food costs, we have to do with commodities. So DOD fresh is just another form of it, and it's all within the POS plans. So you go to the next one. Alright, so this is where we're thinking of our consultant view for equipment costs. So you will see Ames is in blue, Light in red, and Hollywood in purple. So the unit costs, and then two for Ames for the hot holding cabinets and refrigerators. Sheet pan carriers, sheet pan full size. Hot pads, red sanitizer buckets, green detergent bucket, digital stetho monitor, and a POS. So these are our implementation costs, so these are what we need to start up. Most of these items are one-time fees, and we'll maintain them throughout the school years. Alright, next slide. So this is our proposed plan. So for Ames, Light, and Hollywood, to duplicate the central lunch program. Provide a USDA-approved SAC lunch for all students. Roll out offer versus serve with options of fresh fruit and veggies. Enroll schools in a national school lunch program. Create and implement student IDs to be scanned and consider parking charts. So this is what we're proposing as of right now going into next school year. So as of right now, looks like it's only going to be cold lunches. And we're going to go to the next slide where we're going to talk more about the future. Alright, so our consultant hiring recommendations, we actually already hired a food service consultant. So she recently got hired, I want to say about two weeks ago, her name is Abigail. And she will be on site, I think, as soon as she finishes her background in fingerprinting to train a little bit with Jivi. So existing staff and recommendations for staff, so housing in Central. So the food service director works primarily at Hauser during lunch. So Hauser will be the main school that we're going to satellite all of our meals from. It's a kitchen that has the most capabilities. So district employees will work 4.5 hours per day. Two of these employees serve at cashier at Central during lunch. We'll hire one additional staff member for Hauser to allow consultant availability at all locations. So this is one thing that we're definitely going to push on our food service consultant coming in, is that we do want to have a lead at each school. So a lead is almost like a supervisor throughout the day. So this will be able to consult it to actually be able to monitor each account. Right now, kind of how it's set up is your food service director is only stationary at Hauser and Central, where we do want to change that just to make sure that we're supporting each location. We do want to hold a job fair to hire all of these employees for August 2023. This would be a great way, right before the beginning of the school year, to possibly get in more people. That would be great evidence. So can we serve hot reimbursed meals at all schools to match Hauser? So that's our question that we have for you all. So future possibilities, so I'm going to go years to come, or let's say even later on in the next semester. So at Central, Ames, and Light, we would look to add child height steam tables, satellite bulk food, add steam table pans, add fruit and veg bars. So children will have to be transported to school daily if no freezers on site. Going to discuss storage or equipment when room is needed for alternative uses. No, right now, it's currently no dishwashing facilities and limited storage. So both containers and serving utensils will have to be returned to the main kitchen for washing every day. The estimated cost for the additional equipment would be $38,260, which would be a one-time fee. Total estimated cost $114,783 plus electrical installation. So at Hollywood, it would continue to satellite it ready-to-eat food due to the space. It was, when we visited Hollywood, it was very condensed, so we want to be able to do it like we would at Ames and Light. Ames actually has the most potential to actually have more participation, because it's a lot larger and the role is larger.
You know what, I just want to say a couple things. We referred to a pocket chart, and I wasn't sure if anybody knew what that was. Yeah, a pocket chart. Because of the kids, some of them come in for lunch, some of them are on-site at recess. So we're trying to figure out how they can hold on to their card that's going to be scanned. A pocket chart would be placed in the hallway or a vestal before the kids enter in, and it would have a place for everyone's card. So they would pick it out of the chart, hold on to it until they get to the point of sale, hand it to the cashier, and then we would, the food service staff would put it back into the pocket chart. The other thing that I just wanted to clarify a little bit, we're offering, we were offering two options. The first option is the simplest, and it would be providing, satelliteing ready-to-eat food to the other three schools. There would be no serving or anything, it would be ready to give to them when it came to the school. The second option for the additional cost would mean that we would be able to satellite bulk food. You know, it would be in a pan and served out of a steam table. So a little bit different, okay? So just wanted to clarify those two things.
And I just want to clarify too. We do serve cold lunch to our children that are eligible for free and reduced lunch at all of our schools. So I know it's, we don't get the federal reimbursement for it, but, but we do make it available. It's just that we're not eligible for the reimbursement. So one option would be to make that a reimbursable meal. A cold meal or a hot meal is really the decision that, that would still need to be made.
So our recommendation would be to, of course, make the improvements to the line flow as soon as we can. And then in August for next year, serve reimbursable meals at all elementaries to match what we're doing at Central. And as, as it gets up and running, and, and once it's running smoothly, start looking at how we could roll out more of the Hauser food at all elementaries. And that's where the costs go up. We'd need to add a van to deliver the hot food and more equipment. So, well, that's our, our plan for next year and the year after.
So, so, I'm sorry, so that's the difference between the, what was it? The significant investment is for essentially hot lunches at the, at the other schools?
Right.
Or is there any other operational benefit?
It's, it's to be able to serve the hot food to them. Right now at Central, there is some parts that are hot that are in a bag, and they go by and they take it themselves. If we want to really go the next step and get more of the meals like they have at Hauser everywhere, we'll have to figure out the space a little better, but there's a lot more equipment involved. So the costs go up much more.
Not, not what's been presented tonight, though?
Well, we presented both options.
Okay, okay, alright, then I'm understanding it correctly.
Yeah.
The, the $38,000 per school or the $115,000 or whatever, that's to do the hot program. Everything else is just to do like bad bag lunches.
Yeah, which could, which could include, which could include hot. It would just be more convenient based because of the fact that it's coming over to the schools ready to serve. In the bulk service, which it would be a little different, it would allow us to do more extended type recipes.
Gotcha, okay.
So like what we observed the other day was kids having chicken nuggets, and then along, like they could pick a bag of carrots, they could pick a bag of celery, they could pick another item. But like the nuggets were hot, right?
Yeah.
And that's, so when we talk about the reimbursable meals, it's like similar to Central, with Central we're observing. So it's not necessarily a straight-up cold lunch, like always a sandwich or a wrap or a salad.
Right, it would be a, probably a mixture.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
And one thing I would definitely like to clarify is with the hot lunches, boosting participation would be a lot easier. So going with the cold lunches, participation would probably still be about average. But if we do make that conversion over to the warm lunches at each school, participation should go up, which would mean that the reimbursement should go up, which would mean more money on your investment over time. So that's one thing where you will see the costs go up, but that's just because it's going to take a little bit more than, you know, order to incorporate that.
But the cold lunches become reimbursable. So right now, we serve a brown bag lunch. Let's put it in lunch boxes, et cetera, but it's to make sure that all children are fed. But we don't seek any reimbursement. You could do a sort of a better quality cold lunch, essentially, it becomes reimbursable. And that's, that's when it started to make maybe more sense is perhaps more, it's less costly to the district. It provides for a reimbursable meal, and it provides for some improvement in the meals. And also then that becomes a lunch that could be sold to children that aren't eligible for.
Yeah, because...
Yes.
So it's a convenience item for families if they were interested, right?
Yeah, because if you're on the NSLP program, we, we have to provide the lunch to paid, free, and reduced children. The reimbursement is just different. The reimbursement that the district gets is less for paid students, a little bit more for reduced, and the most for free.
Can you, a bunch of questions, so I'll take them in whatever order you want. So your first slide shows anywhere from a third to a quarter participation with how... You, do you have evidence that better, say, hot food will result in greater participation?
I'm sure that I could get it. I, I don't have it off the top of my head right now, but that's been our experience in every situation.
So how much are we, I mean, are we talking another 5%? Are we talking doubling?
I like to say that. So my main roles, I'm a food service consultant at Jazz, or District 201, so right across the street. So I do More Than East, More Than West, and the freshman centers. So I've been there for about two years. So my participation has increased over 100% in the school, from school year 2021, 2022 into this school year 2022, 2023. I am a restaurant dietitian, and I write all the recipes at my account. So one thing that I noticed that boosted a lot more was more of the warm meals. So let's say I give you some, some small ideas. So I do low-main chicken teriyaki and jill, so vegetable fried rice. Those items are all hot meals, but it'll require a lot more to prepare. Where I do do cold platters, I do hummus platters, I do falafel, which is some stuff that you will be able to do. But as far as the equipment goes for participation increase, we have to have more of it kind of on-site. So just, just some food for thought.
Okay. Can you go more in, I'm, maybe I missed something, but we've got reimbursables, we've got NSLP.
You went explanation.
There's a lot of different things going on.
I'm sorry. NSLP stands for National School Lunch Program.
Right.
And then what was the other one, free and reduced? Is that what you said?
Well, there's just reimbursable.
Oh, reimbursable.
I'm not understanding the, what takes us from where we're at right now, which is partially reimbursable, to, like, what makes a cold up there?
Okay.
What makes a cold meal reimbursable?
Okay, it follows a specific meal pattern. Okay, there's five components in, in the meal pattern that's required by the government. They have to have protein, grain, fruit, vegetable, and milk. If you're doing offer, they only have to take three of those five items, and one of the three has to be at least a half a cup of fruit or vegetable. If you're serve, if that's the style that you choose, they have to take all five items. So one of the reasons why a lot of districts go to offer is because it cuts down on the waste. The kids don't have to take all five items, they can just take the three with the half a cup of fruit or vegetable. And they're actually taking what they're going to eat. So cost-wise, that's probably the most efficient way to go.
That helps a little bit. And now I'm back to combining two questions, which is, so offer is basically, there's a selection of items out there. The kid has to pick three of them. One of them has to meet that half cup requirement. Serve just means here's a plate of food. And so we're seeing more waste because the child is perhaps getting things that they might not enjoy.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yep.
And why we don't seek reimbursement for our cold lunches that we currently deliver to Ames, Light, and Hollywood? It's maybe just a historical piece that we, because it's a, it probably almost meets those requirements.
It probably almost does.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's, it has to meet the recline, the requirements and how you actually claim it to the state. So you have to claim it to the state. So maybe, let's say you all probably weren't claiming Ames, Central, and the other schools, so that's why you weren't receiving it. But as soon as you start claiming it, then you will get the school nutrition programs audit every five years, and that's what they have to make sure that you're following the guidelines.
And sign up for the program.
Yeah, so you have to sign up through IWAAS, so that's the Illinois State Boards Education website.
So back to the OVS and reducing waste. Why would one even, knowing the fickleness of the child palate, why would one even go with serve?
In K through 8, I think the biggest reason people choose that is because it takes the decision-making process out for the child. In, in K through eight, I think the biggest reason people choose that is because it takes the decision-making process out for the child. So if you think about them going through the line and everyone's wanting them to get through the line really fast, offer takes them a little longer because they have to decide. If they don't have to decide, you give them the food, you meet the guidelines and you can re, you can claim it.
You move them through the process fast.
That's probably the biggest reason. It's a good question.
I just understand is we're trying to roll this out at the various, um, elementaries that currently don't offer this. For Hollywood specifically, that we would never be able to match the, the program like Howzer has.
Not unless there was, um, adequate space, uh, that would be probably construction, um, yeah.
We need to build a bigger multipurpose room. So, uh, you called out Ames would have the most potential due to space and student population. Hollywood probably not, what about Blythe?
Blythe, uh, it could work there.
Yeah.
It could work at Blythe and at Ames. Just Hollywood is really small, that area. Yeah.
So it's, so it's just the amount of equipment, like where would we put it? That's really kind of the issue, okay?
Yeah. And, uh, Hollywood already has hand washing facilities. That's one thing, um, at Blythe, Blythe they would have, we would have to add a hand washing facility in there. Ames and Hollywood both have that already.
And then with, without having, um, washing facilities for dishes and stuff, they're, they're always using paper plates or something disposable, correct?
No, um, we would recommend that the dishes get, and we've done this in other districts, get returned to the main kitchen. If they're doing that, um, the second possibility, not the first one, but anything that had to be washed would have to go back to the main kitchen. We, we do that in districts right now.
Okay, no, I'm impressed that you do do that. It was, I'm surprised. In a good way.
Would, would that just be the van and everything? Would you get thrown in the van and we take it back?
Yeah.
Okay, so no other equipment or anything like you would have to buy?
No, um, yeah, I, I think we've outlined everything pretty well, what would be needed for the future possibilities of that.
Yeah, no, your, your list of items that you need is pretty specific, so thank you.
So for the, so we, I kind of, Jim, I kind of like your, this last slide here of like, let's sort of move into this step by step. The, I think it's like the cold verse hot that I'm still trying to figure out. It's like you were describing, you, you design these hot meals, like serving trays, I'm thinking the standard cafeteria, steam trays, serve it, scoop it, whatever. But I think I heard you say, I, I guess I was thinking if I didn't do that, then it's just a bag lunch, which is like a cold turkey sandwich, but you guys.
Not exactly. It would be a little bit better of a lunch, yeah.
Okay.
Then there could be some hot also, like.
It could be.
Bosco sticks, that's an easy item. It just wouldn't be those more extended type recipes like he was referring to.
It'd be already prepared.
Yeah.
So something that's pretty much already frozen, maybe we unthawed and then just serve it to the students. But with some of the items I was talking about, it would just require more hands-on tech people to pretty much get those recipes whipped up in the shade. And usually I just know this participation tends to slowly go up once the kids start realizing, wow, this is like something I can eat at home.
Yeah.
Really, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. But you'd be surprised also, um, just making a difference with, um, the better lunches and some hot lunches compared to that they're not getting anything right now. I mean, the only ones that are eating in those other schools right now are the free and reduced kids, yeah.
And so with the, um, so Martha and Jim allowed me to come in and look at the, I saw the central part, I didn't actually see the line at Howzer. So the time study thing was really helpful. The, just using the chicken nugget, the hot chicken nuggets, which were just warm, frozen, warmed up in an oven, and then the cold turkey sandwich, like both of, like could those, we could actually warm something up in an oven and haul that over to another school? We don't have to worry about like temperature concerns or anything like that, or?
The carriers that we laid out in the equipment list, those are, those are what that's for. It would leave the main kitchen in those and, um, arrive in the other kitchen in those and then they would pull out the food and serve it to the kids.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Okay. Which is still a lot easier than the steam tables and literally scooping the fry biser.
Yeah.
Doing the posture.
Yeah, I, I don't know if Wesley quite said it this way, so. But definitely doing this step by step and making the, the reimbursable meals portion, seeing how well that rolls out, what kind of participation you have and observing how successful it is and certainly, rather than going full bore into hot, like let's see how this plays out a little bit.
I will say that marketing definitely plays a big difference. So how we market it as a school district always has helped. One thing that I've done at my school district is I do food service tastings probably once a month. So let's say we do wanna try out new items, it's gonna give the kids a chance, like during lunch to test it out. So this is something where I've always noticed that when I, we go directly from the student feedback, it kind of help you with the forecasting for the food service consultant to know like, okay, well, this is probably something they will like in the future. And then let's say moving forward to kids, they just get a little bit happy that you can do that. I might even do food tastings at the Oakbrook School District, so Butler and Brookport Junior High, if you're familiar with it. And that's one way where I help definitely identify that with that student population, there is more of a Muslim following. So I tried to incorporate more halal diet type meals. So it's something where during the food experience survey and the tastings, we kind of learned the population that we're serving, so we can kind of help with participation with knowing what the students want. So the consultant would be trained on how to do all of that.
And we would also probably make, um, some changes at Howzer, which we could actually go ahead and start making a lot of extended recipes there, you know, right away, because they have the equipment and the steam tables and everything. So I, we would certainly do that too.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. I don't know that, I mean, that sounds awesome, I just don't know how many elementary school kids are. I feel like the middle school kids would probably be more active like you just described than probably the elementary school kids.
Yeah, you definitely have to gear it toward grade level.
Yeah.
That's not, that was my question, so like fiscal year twenty-four, sort of like the phase one, that would be equal across, that would look the same and equal across all of the elementaries, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, Wes, kind of to your point, sort of in my mind, when I knew we were beginning to think about this, that is kind of all I thought that we were exploring for the elementaries. I guess I had not thought of it as, you know, the steam serving stations, the way we have at Howzer at all the elementaries. So like my goal was phase one, period. So I definitely would want to at the very, you know, start there, but.
And the steam table, just so you know, that we're talking about, they're, they're portable type steam tables. They usually have about four or five wells, um, and they are on casters. Um, and then the other thing we talked about a little bit was the fruit and veggie bars, which allows the kids to have quite a few choices of fruits and vegetables that they can serve themselves.
And I think opposite of you, Stephanie, I thought in order to do any of this, we would need all of that equipment. And that's where I was kind of struggling. And now I feel like there's a middle ground that I didn't really appreciate until recently with step one or fiscal year twenty-four suggestion. Cause then I wondered too, just the, you know, we talk a lot about the equity between schools. And so if one school just flat out can't do it, do we just stop there? Maybe we enhance it for Howzer because it's a different population, things like that too. I think just, uh, in my head right now, I just, I wasn't expecting a hundred fourteen thousand dollar bill to get there. So that's like, just taking some time to think about that, is that really how we wanna spend our money? Is it, you know, does it match our core purpose? Um, I think step one probably gets there pretty easily and provides that equity. I'm just not sure about that fiscal year twenty-five. I, I just think we probably need a lot, a little, I need a little bit more time to think about that one, I think.
We would probably come back in a year, like, and have another presentation like this before we move forward with that last.
I wonder though, you know, and with that next presentation, you have like, uh, sales projections or anything, you know, any kind of comparable districts to ours size and age-wise that we could, you know, see it to have that kind of justification.
Yeah, I'm sure we could do that.
I think after they get to know our schools, it'll be better, that'll be easier.
And we could even, you know, do some comparisons on where you're at right now. And now we've implemented this program, the step one program, what, what has it really accomplished?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think what I, what I think about our entering into this, I know the idea that Howzer and Central have had a different lunch program than the other schools has been an issue, I know, as long as I've been here. But I think it was particularly after the pandemic, right, when we were able to serve just a bag, a brown bag lunch literally to everybody. Um, I, I think there was a family convenience item that came up, like, wow, that was pretty nice, just, you know, to be able to get that lunch. So I think improving the, uh, reimbursement for children that are eligible for the free and reduced lunch and then providing a convenient option for families. And, and I know I was sort of, you know, positively intrigued to see that, uh, cold lunch, as you said, wasn't just the turkey or ham sandwich. It really could be the chicken nuggets or the marinara sticks or like you said, falafel. You know, I think there's more than just a sandwich. And even if it's a cold, it was a wrap or, you know, so there, there are some more creative options that, again, it's, it's board direction, board decision. But again, as I've been learning along the way with, with Quest being involved and through Jim, it seems that there's, there is a solution that could meet all five schools, even with Hollywood being smaller, you know, and wouldn't take up all that extra space of the steam tables, et cetera.
Yeah.
And, you know, when we were called in to kind of look at everything, we just really wanted to provide everything we could so you guys can take a look at it and decide what would work for you.
Yeah, no, definitely appreciate that. On, so with like the projections and stuff, that was one thing I was just trying to figure out in my head of, like, I don't, I don't think our, ours is probably gonna double the way that you're talking about Morton did. But I do wonder how many, cause we got a lot of emails when, um, when you sent out the announcement that the program is ending. There's a lot of emails that came in, oh, I can't believe this is going away. And then outside of that, just thinking of, um, I didn't recognize many names on those emails. So outside of that, I had a lot of people asking me about, you know, doing something to kind of expand it. So I, so it feels like there's interest there, but I don't know if that, is that just the ten people that I talked to and nobody else cares? Or is, is that the broader population? So I think it, I think it would be good just to kind of figure out what, you know, what, how many people are actually gonna participate and all that before we dump a bunch of money, you know, a hundred thousand dollars into it and then it's like, oh, well, that was a bad decision.
Yeah, yeah, um, you know, I'll share, I, um, opened up the Homer Glenn School District about six years ago. And before we came there, they were using, uh, preferred meals. And before that, it was just brown bag lunch. Preferred meals is a contractor like we are, um, but they serve, um, almost like TV dinners, yeah. Kind of like TV dinners. And when we opened, I projected the participation to be about forty-five percent, which would have been pretty high right off the bat. And we blew it out of the water. I mean, I couldn't keep enough food in the bill, I mean, it took a while for us to catch up. So, um, I mean, those kids just really, um, liked the food. And I think sometimes when you take over a district that has not really had, like your schools, Ames, uh, Blythe and Hollywood has not really had a lunch program, I don't know, that's been my experience, that the growth has been significant. But we will be able to get some numbers and I'll actually, yeah, I'll actually do some research in some of the districts we have right now and see if I can find some, something comparable, um, to kind of give you an idea, might help a little bit.
Yeah, that would, that would help me, I don't know about it, but I think, I was just, I'm struggling with that one, figure out just what that increase would look like. And then a couple of easy ones, like would it be chicken nuggets, turkey sandwich each day? Or would it just be this is what you eat this Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday and?
We would definitely try to have some variety. We, we definitely would try to have variety, you know, I mean.
Maybe I should ask this other question first. How do you sign up? Like do we, I think at, uh, Central Howzer, they just come in and they grab or like there's money in the push coin or whatever? But like, would we change that at all? Would the parents go in a week in advance and say, I want Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, or?
Somehow we'd have to do that. And, and we've done it with, during the pandemic, people were signing.
But we do it, um, I think Pete Katz was explaining, they do it each morning in the classroom. They tend to like, who's getting lunch, you know, who's getting school lunch today? And they literally put a count in and they report it to the cafeteria at, you know, nine in the morning. And then, and you probably have some predictability, right? Like, oh, about, I mean, you have like about twenty percent and thirty percent of the kids get the lunch. So you're probably setting up for that, but you do a meal count and you as a parent would work with your children. You'd look at the menu and you'd say, yeah, I think you're gonna get lunch on, you know, Monday, Wednesday and Friday this week or every day, or none of the days.
Right, uh, in some locations, we do a pre-order system when parents go in and order. And so then we have the counts and in other locations, we have the teachers do a count.
I was gonna do some, oh, sorry. Like a monthly calendar, something where parents can make the choice in the morning. I'm not gonna send my kid with lunch because they can just say yes to.
It would be a monthly menu, yeah.
Monthly menu.
Yeah.
They like the chicken nugget days or they like the turkey sandwich day. You, you get to know that in your household, so, yeah.
When I.
Not like the Bosco sticks, but I'd be like, bring them home for me.
Yeah, that's definitely a popular.
Well, when I came home and mentioned that it was chicken nugget day, my son was like, what? And then, uh, just on the food waste, I do, I do wanna be a little bit conscientious of that. I assume you guys have something around it, but like, would, is there, is there anything with what we do today that could be improved? Or, I mean, I don't know how much food waste there really is, but is there anything there that we could take account for to maybe, to try to reduce that as much as possible?
Yeah, um, there's a couple of programs in the National School Lunch Program. One is sharing tables. That's a program that they introduced, uh, some time ago. And for non-perishable items and things like that, that the kids don't wanna eat, there's a table with some, um, regulations stated and they can put the food there and any of the other kids can take the food. So they do that. But we, um, definitely try to watch the food cost and waste, yeah.
Which method works better for reducing food waste? The, for example, the count at the beginning of the day or having parents pick and choose ahead of time?
You know, I think, um, probably the pre-order works the best. Just because we've had experience where, okay, we don't, we can't get the counts from the teacher and it's, uh, the truck's gotta move over with the food and we need, yeah, so.
No, that's fair.
I would say that's the, the best, yeah. But I agree with you, as soon as we get a handle on how many people are gonna eat, we'll go ahead and figure out what our production is and then adjust it based on what the actual count.
Sure, there's gonna be a level of predictability over time. I mean, it's, you're gonna have a baseline and the baseline is gonna be plus or minus ten percent or whatever, I assume, over time.
Right, and we would always, you know, send a few extra for all those kids that dropped their meals or, you know, yeah.
Yeah. I heard depending on the, uh, the meal day, uh, kids could. Oh, I forgot my lunch.
Yeah, that happens too.
I want one of those, yeah. Stuff in the bottom of your bag. Yeah. Um, Selena, I can't see you on the screen, but do you have any questions?
No, I mean, I certainly like the idea of moving to a, towards a place of equity across all of our elementary schools. I, um, I'm, 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 maybe I'm just not fully understanding the presentation, but like jumping from the future possibility side, slide, in the one-time costs, I don't get how that marries to the next slide. The one-time costs are only fifty-five thousand. Seems like a disconnect on those numbers. And then the other question that I, I guess I had is, um, at the outset of this discussion, we said that, you know, this, um, this engagement with Quest, uh, came at a time that was convenient because we had some turnover in the food service staff. And so I'm just wondering like, is this, um, is like the vision for the full lunch program something that would typically be, um, directed by whoever we get to fill that position?
Could you say that again, sorry?
So I think what she's asking for is, let me, I'm gonna see if I can recap this for you, Selena. So how this started was during the pandemic, we had, you know, the government, the federal government gave free lunches to everybody to make sure kids were fed. That was a nice convenience factor for the majority of the population in our school district. And, uh, our head cafeteria person is, uh, announced that she's gonna retire. So we either need to replace her or make a pivot. And so we're trying, if we replace her, I think it's status quo. Would that be fair to say? Like it would be no expansion of the schools.
Replace her, but it's also a cha, it's a challenging position to replace in that most school districts probably go now with, uh, a vendor service. So it's, it's pretty rare to hire like a head cook who's in there hand-preparing meals. So, you know, we knew as soon as she announced her retirement that, that we were prob, the pivot was more likely scenario than a direct replacement.
Okay, and so we're trying to explore, if we pivot, can we also expand and basically, generally speaking, cost neutral as much as possible, but we know there's going to be some costs with that expansion. And so I think, Jim, one of the things that Selena was asking here is on the slide, yeah, on fourteen, we've got thirty-eight per school for a total of one fourteen plus electrical costs, but the breakdown on slide fifteen isn't matching up for you, Selena? Is that, did I hear that right?
And then on the next slide, like, I see a one-time cost of fifty-five.
Yeah, I think, I think the one fourteen would need to be added to that fifty-five.
Added to the fifty-five, okay.
Right, because that would be all part of that next step, or I thought the one fourteen was even a third step, but.
But it's for the hot.
It's to make everything like Hauser, I guess.
Yeah, which is the hot, which is the steam tables, the extended recipes and the, yeah.
So then what's the one-time fifty-five, five? I thought, I was thinking this was just kind of a, a better breakdown of the one fourteen.
It, the fifty-five is the, uh, van.
Oh, the van, okay, because we need the van to transport that type of food, okay.
And we need the van even if it's cold lunch?
Right now, in the first phase, um, Jim and I, and we all talked about that you weren't going to need a van. Um, the carrier units are, um, portable, um, they have casters, so they could be wheeled in and out. There'll be two for Ames and one for each of the other locations right now.
And we would just.
And they can be transported in the pickup trucks we have.
Truck, yeah, okay, all right.
Oh, okay.
So the fifty-five would be the van to expand to a much broader food service program, which I think is where my head was initially at, now I've scaled it back. And then the, I guess, the sixty and the seventy-eight thousand, that's the, is that the people?
That's people, right.
Okay, so then we would need, um, going back to wherever we have for the four and a half hours a day. If, for the first expansion, we would need four people at four and a half hours a day, so basically four part-time people.
Right.
And then if we did the next step expansion, we would need another four people?
No.
No?
The driver.
Just the driver would be added.
Plus, plus those four people that are already there.
So the van and the driver would be, I don't know how we want to call this, step one, step two, twenty-four, twenty-five. Twenty-four would be four people, four part-time people, twenty-five would be then adding a driver and a van.
We might, so.
Okay.
Yeah, um, so the sixty is, uh, like fifteen thousand per four-and-a-half-hour person, those hundred and eighty days. And then the seventy-eight is adding, that driver would be at a little bit higher rate, so that's adding eighteen thousand instead of fifteen.
Okay. And then the seventy-one, five is the additional revenue we get purely just by increasing our reimbursements? Or is that a projected increase in total sales?
Using the same flat numbers without selling more.
Okay.
Um, I didn't have a good way to predict.
Yeah.
What to add, so I thought, well, I'll keep it flat, and we can talk about.
Yeah, no, I think, I think that's a good way to go, because I was, I was struggling with that myself, too. So I think any projections that you guys might have of like a reasonable increase, when I was talking to Jim the other day, it's just, it's three-seventy per meal on top of it, that would be like, it feels weird calling it revenue, but it, it's revenue. And so whatever costs go into it, every, every additional meal we set is just more revenue to offset our costs, so we could theoretically make money.
Like a material cost, there wouldn't be any extra labor, really.
Right.
Right.
So maybe it's a dollar, but we still get eight, then we would get eighty-five cents reimbursed for a meal we sell, so.
Making money with reimbursement.
Right, well, but then, then if, but if, um, because right now, we have kind of a, a lower participation than I anticipated. I think you had that in.
About thirty percent at Hauser, right? Uh, twenty percent of children are free and reduced, uh, meals, eligible for free and reduced meals, and then another, it looks like another ten percent when you talk about two hundred lunches served.
So there's a lot of upside potential, I think, here, too.
Yeah, and so if we go from twenty percent to thirty percent or forty percent, that's all just, I mean, we've already spent the money. And so if you increase the number of people buying it, then it's just more money we have. So like theoretically, we could actually come out ahead of what our costs are, depending on how many students participate. So I think that, for me, like, if, if we move into that hundred fourteen, like, if we're going to drop a hundred fourteen thousand or whatever in addition to all this other stuff, like, are we having, have enough participation to even make that cost worth it? And I think that's where I'm struggling to say, hot lunch, in my head, hot lunch isn't the core purpose of our, like, to me, it's not education. I mean, it's a part of it, because you've got to feed your kids and stuff, um, but trying to do like the fancier program, is that really part of our core mission? If we're going to spend all that money and all this kind of stuff, so that, that's kind of where I'm wrestling with, with like the full-blown plan. But it, it feels, I don't know, it feels like a pretty easy yes to say, shift into that twenty-four thing, because then it's like, we got to do it anyway, and we can expand it to the other schools, and we get more reimbursements. It, it almost feels like it's a balance, so, I don't know, it almost feels like a no-brainer to me.
It, it does.
I don't know about the next step, but that first step feels.
That's why I'm saying, we're. Given the current situation with Judy retiring and going to outside vendor, um, we're, we're in that situation. Which is, and if we improve this, our current offering sufficiently, then we get more reimbursement. We, based on your knowledge about good, appealing food to the kids, it, it's, seems like it should be relatively straightforward to get to that twenty-twenty-four position, and then seeing where people are really participating in that. You know, given you're creating appealing meals, you know, see what kid, are we getting good participation? Do your parents just, or do your kids just not eat lunch? I don't, they're, like I said, they're, they can be fickle, so. The twenty-four is a good baseline, I think.
I thought the next step was the step, the final step. I didn't even stop to consider that there was more than that, and I would need probably in a year, kind of a lot to be perhaps convinced that, that is something that we need to do. But at that point, I won't even have a child at Hollywood, but I don't like the idea of, you know, moving in a step that creates another kind of inequity when we worked so hard to, you know, um, facilities, et cetera. But I definitely think there's an appetite, pun intended, uh, from families, as you were saying, Wes, to go from like nothing to at least something, um, uh, which is what we're kind of doing at Central. Um, but I just had a quick question, the pocket chart idea, I really liked, uh, learning more about what that looks like. I can tell you my child would one hundred percent lose an ID they were responsible to bring, so I love that.
Yeah.
There's no, like, discernible way to identify on the ID, ID or anything, children who are free and reduced versus not, or anything like that?
It's not allowed, yeah.
Okay, yeah. But there, do they sometimes grab the wrong one accidentally?
You know, I'm sure there would be a learning period. Um, I just opened an account, Mohammed, in Downstate, um, and we did the pocket chart there, because they had the same problem. Kids would go out for recess, drop the card, now we don't have the card, or drop it from the classroom up to the lunchroom. And we put those in there, and, yeah, a little bit of a learning curve, but, you know what, after a week or so, they're, they kind of, we put them back in the places where they are every day, and they're spread out, so they kind of get used to where it's at. And most schools have lunchroom supervisors that kind of assist with things. Um, so I, I, it works the best system I've ever seen, trying to get them to hold on to the card.
So Central students carry a little card, it is sort of a, uh, probably a modified pocket chart version of things, and that's, they're just carrying it down to lunch, and then they're putting it away. Um, and, right, our lunch supervisors are also a pair professional, so they know the kids. So if someone picks the wrong card, they're going to help them and say, I think you might have picked the wrong card.
And the cards are in the classroom, if I remember correctly.
Well, I think you could do it either way, I think it sounds like some are around kind of the lunchroom, yeah.
We're, we're trying to give it to them, so they have to hold on to it the least amount of time they can get up there.
Yeah.
I think these kids are walking from their classroom with a little paper.
Yeah.
Cardboard.
Yeah.
And that's what I was trying to figure out, the difference between the younger kids and the older kids, of like, why it took so long? Because it, it only took the first, second, third graders like five minutes to get through the line. They had a little card, and they just, they grabbed their stuff, they dropped the card in, and then the, um, for the point-of-sale stuff, they just went through and scanned it after everybody was out, so I'm, I'm sure it's some of the choice stuff with the older kids, and probably just dawdling and some of the other suggestions that you had, they didn't have that many options, they grabbed the bag and go, and so.
Right, right. It's a decision-making process.
Yeah, yeah, okay. This is very helpful for me, um, Marlo, I'm going to make sure you have an opportunity, I don't know if you have anything, but.
I, no, I was just going to say, I think the, I was a little concerned about the time, just because, um, I have a kid at Hollywood, and I know that they're, just getting milk can take up half of lunch, or it's my child that makes it take that long, but, um, that was the only other thing, because their lunches, like, surprisingly short, that I would just worry that they would end up having no time to eat, and they just toss it anyway.
And what age is your?
Uh, he's in fourth grade.
Fourth grade, okay.
He's at Hollywood, so like the, the tiny school that has not that many kids at one time at lunch, I don't know why this is so difficult, but I can imagine that even if there was like choice involved, or having to pay or anything like that, I mean, they have like, twi, what is it, like twenty-four minutes?
They did about twenty, twenty-five minutes, um, yeah, so they, they do move quickly, and it, we did watch the Central students, and they, they do move quickly, um, and.
Surprisingly, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, I know that was, we had asked for just informal anecdotal feedback to our PTAs and PTOs, just because we didn't really want to put out a parent survey, we wanted some parent feedback, and the anecdotal feedback we got about Hauser and about Central was, um, it was just taking too long, that there were kids, especially Hauser kids, that were saying, I don't want to get hot lunch because it just takes me too long, so, waiting in line. So I think that idea of the two lines, of having the salad bar, sandwich line.
And the condiments stations, yeah.
That, that's really positive, um, change that could happen also, and I appreciate it.
And those are really quick.
In your situation, the Central, it was like included with lunch on top, milk only on the bottom, and so I think they, they did like a fast-forward line, where the kid could grab it and just drop and go, so that they didn't have to wait in line. But I think that was another suggestion, just move that completely somewhere else.
The milk line, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So I think these are, I mean, these sound like really good suggestions from what I've observed, and just kind of how you're talking through it, and all that kind of stuff, so. Um, what, what direction or anything do you need from us tonight?
We'd like to go ahead and do, uh, what I have up there labeled FY twenty-four. And then I think it would take a more thorough study and more time to come back and recommend what we would do in FY twenty, but I have labeled FY twenty-five.
And I haven't set this up as a formal action item, it's more a discussion item for all of you tonight, but having a sense of your direction, which sounds like it's the cold, the cold reimbursable meals at all, so it's at all the elementaries, would be the direction then that we would plan and literally prepare and then come back. Is there like an additional contract that gets approved? I know we had approved the consulting contract, is there a next phase contract?
No, it would be the same, we have the contract, so.
So board direction, even tonight, and is the board comfortable with that, by directing the Quest consultants and Jim to move forward with the FY twenty-four, serving reimbursable meals at all elementaries to match the program at Central? Like, is that, is that, is there board consensus on that?
I'm good with that.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and just for clarity, the cost of the one consultant from Quest to be the, uh, what would we call it, like, the head person, is basically a wash from Judy, too, so like, these, this, these additional costs are not that, that's just a replacement cost, and then these are additional costs on top of that. So, yeah, and it sounds like the FY twenty-four suggestion is what we're ready to go forward with.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Just a quick last question, I think you said that Abigail was already in line to be that food consultant?
Uh, she's actually visited with Jim, um, already, and in the process, she got her fingerprinting today or yesterday, and is getting her TB test tomorrow, and as soon as she gets done with that, she's going to start working with Judy a little bit.
Excellent, thank you.
One thing I would like to mention is on, one thing that we do at Quest is each semester, we do our quarterly business review, and during that time, that's what we have shared with you all, the participation trends, usually we do it on a line graph, so that'll definitely help answer some of you all's questions.
Yeah, great, great.
So usually we do it like, say, December or January, and then we do our last one like in March or April. So you all definitely be able to see like the gains or trends or anything like that.
All right.
Yeah, the information is always good.
Yep.
And we would, uh, also do like a survey, um, usually, I'd like to do it sometime in October, kind of get a feel for what the kids think, and then come back and do another one in January, you know, make any changes or what have you, um, based on the feedback that we get, yeah.
I like the idea of those taste tests, too.
Mm-hmm.
Just to kind of get used to it.
Yeah.
Are we going there? Was that part of this, or is that the next phase, the taste test stuff?
Oh, wait, Hauser, I don't see why not.
Yeah, okay.
You couldn't do that, yeah.
Okay.
For sure.
I think a test has the cold things, right, at the other schools?
Maybe, yeah.
Maybe, okay.
Examples, um, I do have survey examples, taste tests and examples where to like put, just a visual, I can definitely send them over, just so you can see.
Okay, all right, I was thinking that was the fancy-fancy stuff.
No.
The kid only likes one type of chicken nugget, like, you want to make sure it's the right type of chicken nugget, yeah.
Uh, any final questions, comments? No, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. I have just two other quick, quick items under superintendent's report, we're still, we're still under superintendent's report.
The longest superintendent ever.
Uh, annual safety meeting, I just want to thank, um, all of our police and fire from Riverside, North Riverside and Brookfield that attend an annual safety meeting with all of us, along with all of our principals and district leaders. Um, so I just shared the agenda with, with all of you there. It's an important thing we do annually, and it helps us just really build those relationships, too. Um, and then Hauser graduation is June first, right around the corner, so the Board of Education obviously is all invited. Wesley will be giving a speech, and, um, we, uh, we do offer the opportunity for you to help hand out diplomas. And Joel, I understand you have some family members, you'll hand out diplomas, too, so. All right, and that is it.
Okay, thank you, Martha. Could the board, let's see, hold on, did I make the motion, or do we read it first? I think we read it first.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Right, the secretary reads the agenda.
Yes, so, so could the board secretary please read the consent agenda?
Uh, tonight's consent agenda, lengthy one, includes minutes of the previous meetings as follows. The minutes from the committee of the whole meeting from April fifth, twenty-three, the minutes of the first closed session on April nineteenth, twenty-three, the minutes of the regular business meeting from April nineteen, twenty-three, and then the minutes of the second closed session, uh, from April nineteen, twenty-three, the personnel report as presented, the payables pre-list as of May seventeenth, twenty-twenty-three, and the payables pre-list as of April twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three, also the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four staff appointments, the non-union salary recommendations for twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four, the general property tax appeal board resolution for Riverside School District ninety-six, and the approval of Holliday's Administrator District Office Non-Union Support Staff.
Nice job on the PTAB thing, because I was trying to remember what that was. Uh, is there anything anyone would like to remove? Okay, is there a motion for the Board of Education to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Still moved.
Second.
Kathy, can you call the roll?
Okay, Ms. Claps?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Ms. Gunn?
Aye.
Ms. Kalik?
Aye.
Mr. Mayorhead?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, next item is Riverside Education Council, it does not appear we have anybody here, all right? Um, any board member comments?
Welcome to our two new board members, that'll be your last welcome, because now it's old news, so.
You, the, uh, dinner we had Friday, uh, the retirement and employee appreciation dinner was quite nice.
Yeah, that was fun.
It's always a lot of fun, and I think you said that's your favorite event?
It is, it's my favorite event, yeah, I just love hearing the stories and everything, so.
The only places you hear some of those stories, at least for us, anyway.
Yeah, it's a little peek behind the curtain, so to speak, well, that's a good one, you missed a good one, Martha.
Yeah, so.
You had, you had other important things to do.
Yeah, just, I know, we want to be mindful of time, but just echoing appreciation, of course, for all of our teachers, nurses, crossing guard staff as we get into the home stretch of the school year, I think by our next meeting, uh, we'll officially be done with the school year, so it's always just echoing all of my thanks for the, for the hard work of our community.
Okay, uh, we will move into committee reports. Ms. Gunn, Policy Committee.
Yep, Policy has been, uh, busy with press issue one eleven, which will come up later this evening under, uh, new business as a first read, otherwise no other updates for Policy.
Okay, uh, Facilities, Mr. Marhol?
Thank you, um, you can, the agenda's included, uh, the big item, we had a. Thank you. Um, you can, the agenda's included, uh, the big item, we had a, met a couple weeks ago. The biggest items were some discussions on where we're going, um, sorry. Talking about landscaping, that we will be looking for um, some specific landscaping services to make sure that we maintain the future Hauser-Central campus. We know that that will require a little bit more effort on the part of a contractor, as well as proper maintenance of the field. There were some discussions about some of the other items that were brought up at various meetings with regard, as we got to the Central-Hauser approvals, uh, some security items and lighting, and right now, right now, those are just discussion items. Uh, you'll see a shared services item. There has been discussion in the past about some kind of sharing with the Village of Riverside, but right now that's on hold, because we do not have any uh, immediate need to move our maintenance garage out from under the audit, um, gymnasiums. And then there's a couple other items for just future consideration, in terms of um, consideration of a bathroom conversion in Central. We know that the Hauser, sorry, the locker, Hauser lockers in the hallways are, that work is being done this summer, but then there's also continuing discussion of work in the locker rooms to improve those. Uh, the architect is thinking about things, and right now we're just in um, early conceptual thoughts. And the solar panel idea is also a very early discussion item, and the big thing there is you need to pay attention to your roof replacements in conjunction with solar, because they basically, you don't wanna put solar panels on a, uh, an older roof. And then also, there's a lot of considerations with regards to the finances. There's been a lot of promises by outside vendors, so that's something that has to be really vetted and researched before we make any kind of uh, commitments there. The other one is, we've got, as you know, we did have approval from the Village of the Central-Hauser plan. Lot of uh, good conversations between the Village interests and the community and us, so I think we've got a really good design that the architect and the engineer are going to be moving forward with, and so they will be doing their design work uh, this summer, and um, getting, working on permits and such, and so we hope to be bidding those documents next fall. And then, once you bid, then we get to awards and permits, and construction um, next year. Any questions?
Do we feel good about construction next year? I know I ask this every time, I'm probably gonna keep asking it, but the NWRD timeline...
It, it's a valid question. MWRD is uh, an institution unto themselves, meaning you don't negotiate with them, you follow their rules, and then you get the approvals. So they have a pretty intense review process, and uh, our engineer has gone through this process before, but they do go through things with a fine-tooth comb, so it's, it looks good, but there's always a possibility that things can go sideways.
Yeah.
There's no, there's no current knowledge that things should, it should be a normal process, but it will, it's a...
I guess more just that wait, 'cause I think Ryan had said it's like six months.
It can be.
Something like that, so, and that just feels tight, but nothing we can do about it. I just was curious if they're feeling, if there's anything's popped up, done selling?
No, at this point, nothing, um, unless they discover something as they dig deep that some, some idea that they had becomes unviable because of ground or utilities or whatever. That's not out there right now.
Okay. Um, I don't know if this is the right form to bring it up, but on your um, agenda list of just things, I know we're doing a big renovation here, but the uh, what was it, the mu- not a musical, well, they did the spring, no. Yeah. Spring music program thing, or whatever it aims, and the speaker system there is like super crackly, and I always forget about it until we do one of those, so I don't know if we need to make any updates or changes there, but maybe something to look at.
It should go on the list for, for maintenance.
Yeah, it's not an immediate thing, but it might be just...
The AM sound system specifically?
I don't know if it's the sound system, but like every time they begin it, it gets crackly and just, it's, it's not clean. So I don't know what that really is, but, what's that?
Are they from wireless microphones or something?
Uh, yeah, I don't know if it's the microphone, or the speakers, or the system, I don't know what it is, but every time we go in there...
It's probably like a portable system, it's probably nothing terribly sophisticated, but we can take a look at it.
Yeah, I don't know if Todd said anything about it, but it bugs me every time I go in there, so. I keep forgetting to mention it, while it's on top of my head.
If it bugs you, it probably bugs someone else who didn't necessarily have the, the forum to, to speak, so it's just, it's something to put on the list of, let's look at this and try and figure out what the problem is.
Yeah, all right, cool. Thanks, Joel. Uh, Ms. Kalik, Education?
Um, we have not met yet, but we're meeting in a few weeks, so I will have something to say, maybe next time.
Fair enough. And Mr. Hunt, Ms. Claps, Personnel?
Uh, yes, well, Martha, Selena and I met remotely on Fri- last Friday. Uh, being Personnel, these were a lot of things that were a part of uh, our other agenda, uh, the closed-session agenda, and I think uh, one, most recently, we've set meeting dates going forward in the future. I think we're planning to meet once a month, usually on Fridays.
All right. And then uh, Mr. Rosati's not here, so June's got the spot here later, so I'll just, I'm gonna punch you till later, all right? Actually, I'm, I'm gonna punch you till right now, okay? So in old business, uh, we have, do we have a motion to, for the Board of Education to approve the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three budget amendment as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Kathy, can you call the roll?
Okay, Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Ms. Gunn?
Aye.
Turn my mic on.
Ms. Kalik?
Aye.
Ms. Claps?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mr. Mayorhead?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, um, let's see, we've got two, two things here on fund transfer. So the first one is a resolution authorizing the transfer of a million dollars from the Educational Fund to the Capital Projects Fund. Is there a motion for the Board of Education to approve the resolution authorizing the directing, authorizing and directing the school treasurer to make a permanent transfer in the amount of one million dollars from the Educational Fund to the Capital Projects Fund as presented?
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion?
So, I, my understanding, this is just part of our planned projects in process, correct?
Right, it was in our budget for this year.
Yeah, this was presented last time, just part of balancing and making sure that we're, the, the funds are properly, I'd say funded, but that sounds bad, um, have the right amounts in them.
Okay, Kathy, can you call the roll?
Ms. Gunn?
Aye.
Ms. Kalik?
Aye.
Ms. Claps?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Mayorhead?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, and the second is a resolution for authorizing the transfer of five hundred thousand dollars from the Working Cash Fund to the municipal retirement slash social, social security fund.
So moved.
Second.
I didn't actually make a motion.
Oh, you didn't.
I was just reading the title. Is there a motion for the Board of Education to approve, all right, I know, that was confusing, I'm sorry, that's my fault. Is there a motion for the Board of Education to approve the resolution authorizing and directing the school treasurer to make a permanent transfer in the amount of five hundred thousand from the Working Cash Fund to the munis- municipal retirement slash, slash, social security fund as presented?
There is.
Say. Okay, yes, Joel, all right.
And who's the second?
And Dan seconded, okay. Is there...
Or Stephanie.
Oh, Stephanie, okay.
We have very similar voices.
It's hard to tell you parts sometimes. Uh, is there any additional discussion from our previous discussion?
Uh, this was similar, uh, making sure that the appropriate amount of money is in the fund, and I know that Jim had talked about, we had kinda spent it down a little bit, and now this is bringing it back to that uh, steady state.
Okay, I have no further discussion. Kathy, can you please call the roll?
Ms. Kalik?
Aye.
Ms. Claps?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Ms. Gunn?
Aye.
Mr. Mayorhead?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, the next topic on the agenda is the West.
Thank you, Jim.
The next item on the topic, uh, next topic on the agenda is the West Forty ALOP advocate proposal that we've been discussing. So is there a motion that the Board of Education approve the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four intergovernmental agreement with West Forty as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any additional discussion on this topic?
I think Angela explained it pretty well on what we're, that this was interesting and advantageous for, for us to take advantage of.
Yeah, I agree. All right, anything else? No? All right, Kathy, could you please call the roll?
Okay, Ms. Claps?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Ms. Gunn?
Aye.
Ms. Kalik?
Aye.
Mr. Mayorhead?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, the next agenda item is a school calendar revision. Um, is there a motion that the Board of Education approve the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four revised school calendar as presented?
So moved.
Second.
And the revision here is simply, I'm gonna get the dates wrong, uh, February sixth, the February sixteenth Institution Day is being, let's see, is being replaced, replacing, it removes the February sixteenth Institution Day, replacing it with the Student Attendance Day, and Tuesday, March nineteenth will become the Institute Day. So basically, just switching Institute Days in order to not have students or staff in the buildings on a presidential primary election and local spring elections. Um, we've had, what is it, one, two of our schools or polling places, I think it is, and so just, there's been some discussion as to whether we should have the active public coming into the school while students and staff are in session, so to speak, and uh, so we're just moving that, so try to improve safety, just having random, um, unvetted, un-uh, verified people in the building, so. Uh, any further discussion on this topic before we vote? Okay, Kathy, could you call the roll?
Okay, Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Ms. Gunn?
Aye.
Ms. Kalik?
Aye.
Ms. Claps?
Aye.
Mr. Mayorhead?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, last topic of tonight, a very lengthy press policy update. It's nine oh six.
No, no, I'm gonna try to make, bear with me, I'm not gonna go in exact order, I'm gonna try to sort of summarize themes during our first read. This is what is being referred to as the Small But Mighty uh, Press Release by ISB. Um, so you've probably seen a main theme emerge here from Fates Law, uh, which I believe we're all very familiar with, but more specifically, this new trailer bill. So again, you might recall that we've made many updates to our policies because of this law, as recently as I think, um, issue one oh eight, which primarily addresses, you know, grooming. This trailer bill uh, further addresses grooming, but it also aims to end what is known as, you know, in quotes, um, passing the trash. So this kind of cycle in which an employee at a district engages in sexual misconduct, is dismissed, and then is hired by another district unaware of the sexual misconduct, and then engages in that misconduct again. So as a result of this, the Fates Law Bill now requires districts to perform what is called a sexual misconduct-related employment history review, or EHR, Employment History Review for short, before hiring an applicant or assigning a contractor. So more to, more to come on, on that, and what exactly that means. So while all of the policies that are affected by the Fates uh, Law Trailer are pretty straightforward, it's really more about the implementation, which is kind of the bigger challenge for the district. And then I just wanna remind everyone, I think it's also a good reminder for um, the new board members that sort of like administrative procedures, implementation's not necessarily governed, or is not governed by the board. We govern policy, but that said, given the fact that this poli- these policies um, are significantly like affecting our hiring practices, uh, we wanted to include some additional information for you all to review, just to understand the steps that the district is taking to implement this new EHR requirement. Uh, so you'll see in Board Book, we included, Martha and I discussed this, and included a helpful memo from Donna in HR, um, along with just a sample of the applicant template and the employee response template um, that are required. And then just the main policies that you have in front of you tonight that are affected by this Fates Law Trailer Bill and the EHR are pretty much all of the fives, anything dealing with personnel. And then you'll also see uh, two-one-one-ten, which is a board-related one, but in the event that we, as a board, are hiring a new superintendent, we also need to undergo this EHR process with the superintendent applicant. Um, and also four-sixty, because that relates to contractors, purchases and contracts. So essentially, a contractor would be considered anyone that has direct contact with a student. Uh, we did discuss this with our attorney, just to better understand kind of what the contractors in our cases would be, and I think some of the examples are, Martha, I think you mentioned like, we have a contractual like speech-language pathologist, you know, nurse, psychologist, but it wouldn't include things like a presenter or author. There could be some exceptions um, here or there, but essentially, that, that's the definition of a contract, a contractor, and why it also affects that particular policy. Martha, anything you wanted to add on all of the policies affected by the Fates Law Trailer, EHR?
No, you did a great job.
Any initial questions uh, from the board after, I mean, it's gonna be a pretty big undertaking for the district to undergo um, this additional kind of administrative piece, obviously very well-intentioned, well-meaning, and understanding why this is now part of the bill, but certainly cumbersome in terms of time, both in asking and then responding to requests as our employees go off to different um, districts needing to also respond.
I think sometimes a policy will say, "Oh, we do that already," you know, and the policy just reflects kind of a, um, an important part of implementation in whatever area. Fates Law is really new implementation practices, and pretty significant in terms of that employee history review. But our uh, HR person has been looking at this, really, this has been coming down um, for a while, probably a year, it's fair to say. Um, we're starting to hear about some sort of third-party vendors that would do this as a service, so school districts are starting to explore that. So I'll certainly keep you up to date around implementation, but implementation is the more significant issue around Fates Law.
So I got an only question, and I don't know that you have an answer to this, is just the whole process of this. Like you said, like people, I have not heard the past, the trash thing, um, but people are so unwilling to like, report this stuff, or like press charges or anything like that, even with some of the local stuff that, that's been happening, it's like, people knew about it, but they didn't say anything to anybody else, so is, is this, is this just convictions? Like, how are we validating this?
I think, I, I think you attached the application, I'm not sure exactly what the disclosures are, if there's ever been even allegations, or an investigation made.
And it's kind of multi-layered, so the individual attests to the fact that they have not been involved in anything like that, and then as District Ninety-Six, we send all past employers that are reported to us, where they're both registered with children.
Oh, okay.
And also, we will be the recipients of other districts and other entities sending us those same kind of requests for...
Okay, so this is, all right, I, I, that, that clears a lot of things up in my head, okay.
Wes, this came out of, I believe, and Martha, Stephanie, correct me, but there was someone who was accused of, but not convicted, and they got passed along, and so without that actual conviction, there was, it was very loose as to what anyone had to say regarding them.
Yeah.
And Donna's memo, actually, I think it, the key is, there's actually a consent by the applicant to re-release records. So records that could say bad things about them, and that we don't get liability because of that.
The interesting thing, too, and as well-intentioned as this bill is, is our only duty is to engage in this process. We don't need to wait for a response, we don't need to hunt down a response, because they all... response, because they also need to disclose, like, if they ever worked as a, what did they say, camp counselor, lifeguard, like, come, places that may not even be open anymore or certainly not responding or not as aware of this. As, school districts will be very aware of this and accustomed as this rolls out, but other employers that they have to perhaps disclose that they've worked at in a capacity with exposure to, uh, children, uh, probably are not going to be as familiar with this and might not even respond. So.
We have to send it out three times, you know, so, but it is, there are complexities to the implementation.
Yeah, that's what it seemed like, and without like, a central system or official convictions, I do wonder, on the other side, an accusation is not a conviction, and accusations are very difficult. So just, it is more rhetorical, I think, more than anything else. It just feels like, uh, like I get it, and I agree with the intent. I think it's gonna be hard to apply.
One of the things we've asked is, like, could our Regional Office of Education that deals with licensure track this in some way? You know, it's going to be, I think it's going to be cumbersome and onerous for local school districts to manage all of this.
Yeah, okay. Um, was that it?
But those were the main ones from Fates Law. The only two other ones that I just wanted to, um, point out and spend some time on, is they had some, um, substantive updates are, um, six one three five, and I, I'm not necessarily gonna call Angela up here, but Angela also reviewed this one, dealing with the accelerated placement program, which essentially just removes, um, specific language that is now, um, only limited to districts with grades nine through twelve. So that is why it has been removed. We are not a district with those grades, but, so fairly straightforward.
But it's not changing any of our current accelerated, correct, processes?
Correct, yeah. I just wanted to provide clarity on why that was, and then the other one I wanted to, um, bring up was six two thirty, which is Library Media Program, um, which is really interesting. This one has garnered a lot of national attention, uh, even to some extent local attention. Um, so this one, we also had just our attorneys kind of review the language that was suggested by press, and they actually feel that the language, um, goes a bit too far in regards to suggesting that we use this Uniform Grievance Procedure for library objections. Um, some of you might recall in the last press update, we just did a kind of overhaul to some of our curricular objections, and so, in theory, somebody who has an objection to library instruction material could, um, under our curricular objection policy, um, file a complaint that way. So I, I only, I printed the old one, sorry, but I know the new one is updated.
They're both in.
They're both.
And it looks like the revision is just striking everything outside of the one two seven?
Yeah.
And is, and I know you gave us something about forensic didn't like that for some reason. I just can't recall what.
For what Stephanie was saying, she, this is, it goes too far, and using the Uniform Grievance Procedure, she said, I think it fits better with, like, curriculum objection.
Uh, okay, yeah, 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 that's what it was, okay.
And we saw the structure in place by which somebody could technically, you know, uh, object or, or file a complaint against some of our library materials, but we don't need to, in addition, now add this, this new process just specifically for library materials.
Got it.
At least that's what's been advised to us.
It's not really removing an avenue, just kind of.
Less is more.
Taking it to a well-known place.
Less is more, what would you say?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think just connecting more to a curricular area as opposed to sort of general grievance concerns and procedures.
Just out of curiosity, uh, how many of those do we get in a typical year or a typical five years?
Library objections?
Or any objections.
Oh, for good, I, in my seven years, not had any.
Mm-hmm.
Actually, I shouldn't say that, uh, because parents can opt out of health education. We consider that a curriculum objection. You can opt out of Aaron's Law. There's been a handful of those.
But nothing major. I would call as more common opt-outs, more than like objections.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. The library one was the one question I had, Stephanie, so that makes sense. Anybody, any other questions or comments? Okay, all right, so we will vote on that, uh, next regular meeting. Okay, that is the end of our agenda. So the future meeting dates for board meetings are June sixth, which is a Tuesday. We are having a self-assessment at six PM in the Ames Library. It is a closed meeting, um, so that, none of that will be open to the public. The June seventh meeting, which will be a regular one, is canceled for replacement of that. Uh, the June twenty-first regular board meeting at seven PM in the Hauser Learning Resource Center. The July fifth meeting for Committee of the Whole is canceled due to the Fourth of July holiday. Um, and then July nineteenth, we have on here as a possible cancellation. Is there any thoughts to have or not have at this point in time?
Well, I guess it comes down to, you know, from the administration side, are there pressing matters or issues that would be, you know, we, we're already canceled a couple here, so is there a, a reason, or is there anything anticipated, uh, why we would need to meet? Anything that would need to be approved at, at that time, or would it make sense to keep it on the calendar for now, and as we get closer, if there's nothing pressing, then we could.
Maybe the June twenty-one, that decision?
Yeah.
Okay, so for now, we'll hold that July nineteenth. I, I agree with that, Dan, so for now, let's just hold the July nineteenth, and then we can figure out on June twenty-first if that's needed, depending on what you need from us over the summer. It is pretty light over the summer, so, but you never know what's gonna pop up, so, yeah, good suggestion.
And something, I think we have a self-assessment, we could talk just about general cadence of meetings, that, you know, we, we never have a January cow, we never have a July cow, just the, sort of based on Fourth of July and the New Year's holiday. That's sort of, sort of become a given, you know, memorializing some of that, and some districts I know don't meet in July, and I know, making sure we have a quorum, and, and that's a busy time of year for families to get out of town, that sort of thing, too.
Yep.
So I like that idea of waiting till June.
Okay, and then, uh, August second, two thousand and twenty-three, Committee of the Whole, seven PM in the multipurpose room at Ames. And that is the end of our agenda tonight, so meeting adjourned.